I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item of business in the public hearing. We have a building corporation set up to look into the connections for our highway garage, leasing and financing. Do you have a -- this is our fill-in for Roy today, Mr. Cohen.
Hi.
And does he have any description on the one we get? If not, we'll have to look into the public hearing.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, I can give some description if you want.
Fantastic.
So, as you described, there's a highway garage that's under consideration for financing by the county. This would be financed through a lease financing with a building corporation because the amount of the financing would be up to $15 million. And when it's of that size, it's typically done through a lease financing. You, before you can enter into a lease for financing of this size, you have to hold two public hearings on the project. You held one previously, and this would be the second public hearing. The, if you so choose after the public hearing, you have a resolution before you. Do you guys have that resolution, or do you need copies?
I think we see it via email. Did we have it printed for him today? I believe we do.
Okay, great. And in that resolution, you would make a preliminary determination to enter that lease, and it describes what the terms would be. The maximum term of lease would be 20 years. It's anticipated that the interest on the bonds would be 3% to 4%. The JAS has set out, in the paragraph two of the resolution, it states what the estimated interest cost would be over that 20-year term, which would be $6 million roughly. It also indicates that the maximum lease rental payable under that lease would be $1,053,000. And over the 20-year term, that would come out to $21 million, or $21,600,000. Also, as part of the statutory requirements, the board has to share what the anticipated impact would be on the property taxes from the lease. And as you can see in section three of the resolution, it sets forth what the increase in the debt service levy would be for this. And it would be, you currently have no outstanding debt that's payable for property taxes, so you have no debt service levy. If the maximum here, it would be .062 as a result of this financing. The, so that the, if, like I said earlier, if upon hearing any other public comment, you show, you could consider this resolution, which then makes a preliminary determination to enter into the lease, it allows the process to continue forward. Do they have to answer any questions?
Okay. Wide open for public comment.
Hi Lisa, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you. You're on speaker. He couldn't hear.
All right.
Those numbers are maximum numbers. Those are actual numbers.
Yeah, not to exceed.
That is, that's correct.
Okay.
So, as we go through this process, we approve actual parameters. The project actually won't be financed until they have the firm numbers, but that way we don't have to go back to any processes.
Sure. Hearing nothing else, you want to close the hearing? Or can we pass the resolution at this time?
I would probably close the hearing and pass the resolution.
Close it to public comment.
Hearing nothing else, take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. So, take that under consideration, and we'll open our normal meeting. So, first item of business today is the minutes from our August meeting, 16th. And we had two regular and executive session, all entertaining motions accepted, and that's a present.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay, we had two payrolls in the last pay period. Payroll 17 totals $246,242.16. Payroll number 18 totals $235,784.26. We had total claims of 131 totaling $1,215,867.32. And a campaign motion for financials.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Three, zero. Okay, so we'll move into Scott.
Morning, Jeff.
Morning.
Morning.
Just a couple things here. Inmate population is at 62 this morning. 18 of those are pre-trial Superior, 20 are pre-trial Circuit, nine are F6, and 10 are DOC. Only a couple things here to go over. One, I forwarded you all an email from Elevatus. They have the final drawings completed as of the end of last week for the renovation project. So if you want to view those, there's a link on there that you can, you can access that Other than that, I had, gave information as well in that finalization of some modifications to the renovation. That'll be addressed tonight in the council meeting, which would include, in closing, the Sally Port portion and the additional stuff that comes along with that, as well as the fire alarm system replacement. Couple of years ago, I brought that up. Our current, or fire existing stuff is obsolete. We were having, when they were doing the reno stuff, Amaresco and looking at their energy study and everything else, we started having problems here in about the last six months of things going out. And the only way to fix that is to replace the loops in there. Since they are adding an additional loop into the jail for the new portion that's being added on there and the modification to the, modification to the intake area, they gave us a price to replace all the loops and put it all in one control panel. So it would be all new fire suppression units and loops for the entire jail, which is needed there. So, those two things and the modifications totaled $371,404. That change order or modification order was forwarded to you guys, so I guess, I don't know that necessarily. You guys need to make an approval on that, but I guess your comments on that so that the council going forward would know.
I would publicly support the enclosure and the fire system updates.
Same.
Okay.
All we're doing.
So, I will address that with council tonight and go from there. I think it's, I think in the beginning, we didn't mean to try to modify anything at the last second, but just the safety and security. I think in the beginning, when we were looking at using CARES Act money and the amount of dollars that was available to us was a lot lower. We were trying to keep the cost down, but I think since we're looking long-term, you know, setting the jail up for the next, you know, 30, 35 years or whatever, it's the right thing to do. And so, about a month ago, we tried to see what changes could be made to that when we were tweaking the final details. So, I appreciate the support on that. I think it's due to the safety and security of staff and the inmates and everything else to have that Sally Port enclosed instead of being a car bay, so to speak, or covered. But it's, it needs to be done, so I appreciate that. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sean is gone, but yours I need to grab. Is that him? Great.
Certainly. We've got a, Sean got a delivery of a 60-foot pipe, length pipe, today rather than tomorrow, so he is out there trying to get that coordinated quickly, so get that truck unloaded. So I've got his report here. Just wanted to throw the highway department updates. We had 87 miles of chip seal projects were completed for 2021 since the last meeting. He is working, they're working diligently on getting some of those sections striped, so the skip marks and shoulder lines, no passing zones, trying to get those marked out. The contractors are actually working with a number of them, trying to get a timeframe and final budget from them to get that done. Many of them are busy, so that's been difficult to get them nailed down. Backhoe crew has started back in the north with a number of pipe crossings that need to be done. We're catching up with the mowing and roadside ditches, and will continue to do so as needed. Trucks are almost done with grading of all the, rather roads. Road conversions this year will be 800 east between 300 and 350 south, and then that portion of oblique road there outside of Fairer Cruz and the county line. We're planning on starting those as soon as crops are off. In fact, we'll probably even talk to the farmers and see if any of those areas could be harvested earlier that allow us some additional time to start doing some of that work. So, it's, I think there's only like three property owners or farmers out that way, so I'm hoping that they might work with us to try to get that started yet this year. So, but that was Sean's updates for you, so. For myself, Endot Federal Aid for 2027, they have announced that they're going to have a call this year. That call will start November 1st and be through December 3rd. The plan at this point would be for me to apply for the remainder of the county road 200 south work. That's from the Clark and Hoosier Highway intersection, or just east of that. This would be where the rail overpass project ended. Would take that from there, the Clark and Hoosier Highway, all the way over to State Road 1 to the east limits. So that's, that is consistent with the agreement between the county and the city and the redevelopment commission, so that's, that's the only project that I have right now on our slate. We haven't studied others for a federal aid call, so I wasn't looking at going for any other applications unless I hear back otherwise. So, right now, that's our plan. Next item here is Bridge 99. That's Hoosier Highway and Ash Road. As you're aware, the work has started out there, so the closures and detours are in place. I'll be actually going out to look at that jump side a little bit this afternoon to kind of see what the progress is. There's a few shop drawings that are coming in for approval at this point, but that work is underway, and the target right now is 90-day closure for that, so we're hoping to be back up and open here in November. Try to get that done, so the asphalt work will be done before the asphalt plants close. So I, I need to talk to the actual contractor on it. The project manager was on vacation the week they started the project, so that was a little bit of, I think, the confusion as far as when the start date was going on. So, certainly an apology to everybody who was impacted by these sudden detours. It was, it was not our intention.
Prior to what we had already.
Yeah. It was supposed to be starting today, and then they just show up with the detours last week, so I'm glad we got notices out to warn people, at least that it was coming before it happened. Next item here is County Highway Design Standards. I've been having some meetings with Farm Bureau, with NERC, which is our Regional Coordinating Council, on safety issues. I know there's some meetings that I want to have, certainly with our first responders, looking at different elements within our county road standards, standard details, drawings, designs, what do we want to have within our permit requirements, so that's moving along. I'm hoping to have some more input over the next month or two. I'd like to get a draft to you, Rob, before the end of the year, to see what we're going to try to implement. I don't see this as being a codification of these rules and then never touch this again. I really see this as being something that we're constantly trying to renew this, and using this, these county standards as an explanation for meetings with different interested parties, transportation directors with schools, again, first responders and Farm Bureau, talking to them about what are our project updates, here are some things that we want to see done, what are complaints that we're seeing, so that we can kind of, not so much police, but make sure that we do the right things with the road details. When we're asking someone to do something, or even when it's work that we're doing ourselves, we want to try to meet a certain minimum standard, and that's, that's what we're going for. So, don't want to rush into that, but that's just an update to you that we have had some meetings, like you were aware of one of those that we had. So, we're going to keep that up, and it seems very positive, and in conversations with both Farm Bureau and NERC. Update on Bridge 71 and County Road 2 South, those were the federal aid projects for 2026. I have both of the agreements finally, so I'm going to send those off to Endot for their approval. I should, I was hoping to have those for today, but I didn't get the last one for 200 South until just last week, so I'm going to send them off to Endot, and then I should have that for you by our first meeting in October. Driveway pipes, County Road 1000 North, you should have a draft letter that I prepared. We had communicated with two property owners on 1000 North. If we look back at it, it's already been a year now, or on plus, and I have not really received any response from the property owners. Actually, I have not received a response from the property owners. So, I'm asking permission to do this, to send them a second notice, essentially with the deadline, asking for a response from them, reaction in the next 30 days, from the day of the letter. If we don't receive that, then I'd like to have the highway department proceed with replacing their driveway pipes at the property owner's expense. And once the work is done, we'd put together the cost to the county as far as labor and materials, and then we would send an invoice directly to the property owners for that work. We want to try to have that done before this winter, and I don't think it's necessary for this to go through winter 21, as we've gone through the winter of 2020, and certainly within your rights as the county commissioners to have that done. I'm just asking for your permission to issue this letter or something similar to it to the property owners, if you're comfortable going with the deadlines and with those terms that I just outlined for you.
I mean, the first letter is June 2020, so, I mean, we're talking 16, 17 months. I think it's realistic. I think it's fair, and for the safety of people traveling on the highway after a rain.
Yeah, it's been a concern.
Needed and necessary. Be open for comments and suggestions.
So you'll outline, hey, if you don't respond to this, this is what we're going to do.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll proceed with the replacement of the pipe. It's fairly non-invasive. It's going to be worked within our right of way, and we'll just provide the pipe, dig it up. Both of these are driveway, so it's not like we're trying to drive an asphalt over a concrete driveway, so it should be open fairly quickly. I've worked with Sean as far as maybe putting a door hanger out, as far as notifying the property owner before we do the work. That way, they're not being cut off. Both of these have loop drive, so they'd have, always have one of them open, so if there was a confrontation or something like that, they're always going to have emergency access to their properties because of how their driveways are actually set up. So, no, I think that that's, that's doable, but it's certainly not something we want to do, otherwise we would not have been as patient as we've been with taking action. But because this has come as a result of a complaint from the property owner, that's a safety issue, it's really not something that the county can just turn a blind eye to. So we wouldn't do that. We didn't have to.
I think that's fair.
Appreciate it. And the last item that I have on the agenda here is the right of ways. From my understanding, we have a number of different right of ways.
I'm not sure how many there are, but whatever is in that folder, I would entertain a question.
So moved.
Quite a bit.
A good check.
I have some too.
Okay, so, yeah, so those are everything from bridge projects to road conversions, so.
We have a motion to give. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Well, thank you very much.
John, we have you next.
I am here on behalf of the city to request of the commissioners to transfer a gap to the city that was created when the estates of part of the city were created. The city became responsibility for that portion of 200 North, County Road 200 North. And so what we have today, though, is, you can see by the map, there's the little gap basically in front of Steve Skiles' property that still belongs to the county.
Right.
And so what I'm suggesting is that a transfer remade, and I'm not sure of the mechanics of it, that's up to the attorneys, to have that small portion transferred to the city, and that way the 200 North will be consistently through the city to the eastern boundary of the estates of part of the city.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to have the city and then we own the 200-foot gap, and then the city has the other frontage on part of the city.
That's my request.
I have no issue.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Mike, maybe next. Good morning.
Good morning. I inherit your request and extended medical leave for our administrative assistant while doing that she'll be starting up working here shortly, that we still need some time protection for her for initial 30 days is what we would be asking.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mike.
Here's a check for you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Lynn, we have you next. Hey, you're here for Marley?
I am here for Marley, yes. I am for Marley. Well, good morning. I just wanted to be present, give you an update of the status of COVID testing and vaccines, and then answer any questions you might have about the tests and whatnot that you have addressed. Currently, the Wells County advisor level is orange. We currently are dealing with a seven-day positivity rate of 13.5%. So it's way up than what we were normally having. We are doing testings on Mondays and Thursdays. Mondays is really just a half a day. We're averaging 35 to 40 tests, and then Thursdays is a full day, and we're averaging 75 to 80 tests on those days. So, very big uptick on testing. We have had a volunteer from the National Guard helping out on the testing, so we have had two people doing the testing on those days. And currently, you know, up to this date, from the very beginning, 55,558 tests have been administered to Wells County residents. And I think that is just over, or just under 15,000 people that's been tested, so obviously there's multiple tests being done on the same person. As far as the accuracy of the test, we are using the antigen, the Binax Now test, and it's not as sensitive as, say, a PCR test, which is the one that goes up into the nasal parangial passage, which we've probably all experienced. But it's not as sensitive as that test, but it does have a high rate of detecting negative cases. I think it's about 98% accuracy on that, and then it's an 84% accuracy on detecting positive cases. So generally, if you get a positive result from that test, more than likely, a high positivity rate, saying that you're positive, but then there are risks of having false negatives. So, we are dealing with that. The schools early on had been, been able to do Binax Now testing, which some did last year, but they have since dropped that program. They're not doing the testing in the schools, at least to my knowledge. Any of the three school districts in the county are not doing the testing. So, that is where we're at as far as update, and if you have any particular questions about anything.
Is all the testing done here?
Testing, we have moved, yeah, we have moved everything to the health department. Currently, we are using or utilizing a children's playroom that we had before, and we're doing that, we made that into a testing room, and then have like a waiting area in the lobby.
And that you just use the portal to block in a time to get me?
Correct, yeah. They're still scheduled through Zotek and, you know, given that time, so. And of course, we do take walk-ins as well, so.
But Mondays and Thursdays?
Mondays and Thursdays, yeah.
And speech?
And we're still doing the vaccines as well. And we do offer all three still, Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Yeah, I've seen the uptake in that.
Yeah, it's definitely up there. We're, you know, we're, we're holding it, 82 deaths in the Wells County residents, and you know.
We had our first one last week from April.
Exactly.
We had a long, long period.
Long, yeah, exactly.
Maybe another one coming, so.
Right, right. So, and that's it?
Are you doing more vaccinations right now than you were?
No, we, we definitely saw a drop. I mean, obviously, from the very beginning and the onset of the vaccine, we were doing 450 vaccines a day each time we were done. We're down to maybe 20 scheduled, 20, 25 scheduled, so we are, I mean, if you've heard the booster or the third dose, which actually, the verbiage there is confusing because the third dose is totally different than the booster shot. The third dose is the, those that you're getting the same manufacturer, the same amount, everything from just another dose because maybe you're immunocompromised, you're a cancer treatment patient, kidney or any organ transplant patient is recommended to get those third doses or additional doses right now. The booster, however, we don't know what the makeup of that is going to be. It could be a lesser dose, it could be a different makeup, you know, as far as the manufacturer's concerned, but that officially, so people are a little confused on that, and you know, that is totally separate than the additional dose that's recommended now, so.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
On the miscellaneous business, the next thing on the agenda is the 2022 holiday schedule. We tabled it from last meeting to this meeting, and I have two schedules attached. You can decide what you want to do or look into it more. One has Juneteenth, one has, does not have Juneteenth. Some counties are replacing Columbus Day with Juneteenth. Currently, we observe all federal holidays, and that is considered, that is a federal holiday.
Mike had a comment on the thread, maybe just to wait till we have our replacement. Are you okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'd like to table it till October.
Let's bring our new person in in October and make a decision at that time, if that's okay.
And then next is the September 20th meeting. Did you still want to have the September 20th street fair meeting, or did you want to cancel?
Cancel.
I think that would be good. I see Rick isn't here, but I think with the timing and everything with our publications and meeting the requirements for that required publication, I think we'll be okay. Keep that off.
Okay, and the County Highway Garage, and that's the resolution that he was referring to. I also had, did he lead? I have another resolution that was in that paperwork as well. A resolution amending and restating the resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the CMC method. Yes.
Right, the delivery method rather than do a build, whatever it was to a construction manager.
Right, and then there was an opening, or QAW was taken off, and.
Correct.
Opening in that resolution. Is that something we need to deal with today, or do you have anybody you're going to put in that opening?
We had a list of names, but I don't think we, I think we can pick that up at our October meeting.
Their resolution. The resolution?
I think we can pass the resolution.
And then add a name?
And add a name at our October meeting.
Okay. So I have a resolution that he explained, the preliminary determination to enter under a lease to finance the new county highway garage, and then the resolution authorizing use of the construction manager.
So one is adopting the method and the other one is...
Changing the delivery type.
Gotcha, yeah.
Right, right. So that would be resolutions number 2021-18.
Motion approved of that.
I'll second.
And 2021-19.
Home favorite, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
2021-19?
2021-19.
And that's the delivery.
The delivery method.
Yeah. Motion approved.
I'll second.
Home favorite, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And also in Roy's right-of-way documents, he had a deed for a minor subdivision for the county home cemetery, which you are issuing a deed from the commissioners to the commissioners for the cemetery.
Yep.
And also a right-of-way agreement to sign the county highway right-of-way around the county farm.
Exact, yeah, the existing county farm.
Yeah, just so your logos are in here as well.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Home favorite, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
We had seven people respond. Actually, I think all of them were completely, had different ideas. A couple of them had the same percentage as the commission. After meeting an executive session, for the best of my knowledge, Holerman was given, or was the recommendation, proceed with. I'll open it up for additional comments or anything from you guys. Only thing I can tell you is that we just received a letter from Indiana Michigan Power. Those are affected with this transmission line. It says it's proposed final route by late September. We have no clue what it'll be, but we anticipate knowing a route at some juncture, probably in the next three quarters, opposed to the vote. But I guess the motion I guess we need from you guys is today is to support the Holman. Make that in form of a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Home favorite, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And then you can also set the minimum bid today if you would like. I had a brief discussion with Roy about that. He said a lot of times they'll take the 80% of the appraised value for a minimum bid. So I averaged 80% of track number one would be $800,320. 80% of the number two would be $796,640. I'm sure you can wait on that as well.
Yeah, let's wait on that till October. I guess some of the ways this legislation makes it upon us commissioners to buy and sell properties, crazy, being kind of, but we have to follow that. We will deal with that at our former meeting. Do we want to set a date of the option to save a date type of deal, or do we want to do that at our October meeting?
We want it to be in October, so we give us Holman and Seawood.
They gave a temporary date, and I'm just thinking it would probably be wise to put it, except I think it'll be both an in-person and online option. Their recommendation was November the 9th to Tuesday. And I would be okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Just...
I'm okay with that date. Let's tentatively put in November the 9th as a recommendation, and that way we can confirm that date or alter it at our next meeting. Do you have last four sources?
The ARPA plan. You were all emailed an American Rescue Plan Act. And this is just saying what your allocated funding would be for use of the ARPA. Looks like in this plan, responded COVID-19 public health emergency, you would use $2,750,000 and $2 million set aside for water, sewer, broadband infrastructure development.
So Blake, by law, in order to spend the ARPA money, the plan is to be adopted by the county. So this plan is put together in consultation with Roy and brought in the shield from our office. And as Lisa described, it provides for $2.7 million to go to force a jail. You can see you're eligible for a total of $5.4 million dollars and receive $2.7 million to date. That would be used for the jail project to mitigate COVID spread within the facility. And then also, as she described, there would be $2 million for sewer. So the resolution before you that Roy put together just outlines the sources of funds, how much money do they see, and then approves the proposed plan.
Right. I think the number goes from 2.7 to 2.75.
That's right. It's the total amount of money you have is $5,496,166 received in two equal amounts, $2,748,083. And for the jail, I think it allocates $275,000.
So the resolution number they have?
It has coordinates, 2021-11.
Motion approved of that.
I'll second.
Home favorite, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Can I have a motion for the plan? The plan is one document, and then those coordinates. I just want another motion for the plan, approving the plan.
The Commissioner approved of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Home favorite, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
That's everything I have.
Well, 40 minutes, whatever compared to the amount of time this meeting took place before, that's unreal, the amount of hours that we spent doing what we've done this today, so unreal. Do you have anything, Colin?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mike?
No, sir.
I'm calling back to Kev later. Lisa, anything else? Jessica?
Yes.
Did you want to do anything on the construction manager contract?
We have chosen to pass that, but select at our August, our October meeting.
Okay, sorry I stepped out.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No.
We did pass that, that we're going to select at our October meeting, so.
I'd just like to thank Kevin for your service on the board, and, you know, I've been with the Sheriff's Department almost 19 years, and I appreciate all the support that you've given law enforcement, and most recently with the jail project and everything else, the time and effort you put into making that happen. And I really appreciate everything you've done, enjoy working with you throughout the years, so I appreciate everything you've done.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Sheriff. You're a pleasure to work with. Wells County is very fortunate to have you in the position. Your staff, deputies, jailers, you know, everyone in the jail, you've done very well. And Wells County voters should be commended for electing you for that, so thank you.
On behalf of the highway department and myself personally, I'll echo those statements. It's been a pleasure working with you, Kevin. I wasn't sure if this was going to be your last meeting or not, so I'm saying that for mine. But certainly going around and talking to other county highway engineers in other communities, and certainly with the state, your reputation and your name precedes even Wells County. So as an envoy or ambassador for Wells County, certainly your reputation has gone out and people recognize Wells County for the work that you've done for the community. So I certainly appreciate that, and hopefully that we can continue this sort of work that you've done for the community over the years to come. So thank you for your work. Enjoy your retirement.
Well, thank you.
Which I'm sure will be kind of a half-retirement, I'm sure. Plenty of things to keep a...
Right, right.
For that, thank you very much.
Well, you know, when the commissioners, when we hired Nate, we really jumped light years ahead of where we'd been. And you've done very well, and Wells County has done very well, and we continue to do well. And so we appreciate what you do because it makes our job easier along with county council as well. So thank you.
I just follow up on what he said, is in terms of being a leader for, an ambassador for Wells County. Everybody here sees directly what he does for the county, but at the state level, Kevin's been a huge contributor to the Indiana Association of County Commissioners, having served on its board, and through many challenging times, taking on some major legislative issues, and is really off the organization statewide, so thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Rick. We've, Rick, as a leader amongst the County Commissioners Association with Barnes &amp; Thornburg, we've gone through a lot of projects, as you said, and we could always rely on Rick and the firm to look out for our best interest, and we continue on with them. So thanks for being here.
Kevin, on behalf of the county council, I'll speak for the whole council, and we appreciate your service to the county. I appreciate personally you being a mentor to me, the county government, and just wish you the best.
Thank you, Steve. It's a pleasure. Under your leadership now, along with the county council members, Wells County is very fortunate with these big projects that we have going forward. You know, in watching this for 28 years at the county level, other than just the courthouse renovation, since I've been around, this is a big step. And you guys are to be commended. The work and building between the county commissioners and county council, it's very noticeable, and it really moves things forward. Because as we've been around for a lot of years, Blake has seen this, Rick knows this all too well, there's a lot of times that counties do not have harmony amongst council members and commissioners. And there's a small window there where they meet, because they're always on different waves. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Yeah. So for Wells County to be on one of the upticks moving forward, good for Wells County. Definitely.
Just need to keep that momentum.
Right. I would just like to add, we couldn't work the way we work without Lisa.
She's unexpected.
You didn't pass her through this one.
The last few months have been crazy.
She, as I've always said, she keeps everybody in line.
Well, you're my go-to guy, so if ever I have a problem, I always call Kevin.
Phone's always there, but it really, it makes this position, I don't want to say tolerable, but it helps alleviate the strain when you know you can pick up the phone and call Lisa.
Thank you.
Because you're watching out. And I don't think, it's very unfortunate in an auditor's position that they do not get enough credit for what they do.
Or pay.
Or pay, correct.
A good amount have an assistant to the commissioners.
Right.
And we don't. We just work what they, her. Thank you.
We do.
So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, just to add another, I appreciate everything that I've, all the individuals I've served with. It's been great. As I said previously, Wells County is in a very good position. They've elected a lot of good individuals to be in those positions to look out for Wells County's future. Blake, Mike coming on board, the new person taking over my position, there's a lot of good energy there. You know, myself, I've enjoyed it. The network of friends that you create, serving in this capacity or throughout the state and, you know, even the federal level, is really, that's what helps charge our batteries to keep us moving. And, but in all honesty, I'm ready to go play golf with my wife and watch grandbabies and split firewood, and life's short. You know, we've all, we all go through it. And when you look back on things, it's like, eh, it's just time to do it. You know, somebody else can carry the ball. It's been a good ride. So thank you, Wells County. I appreciate everything you've done for me.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we close? Courtney, did you want to bring something up? No? Okay.
Thank you, Kevin, for all you've done.
Thank you, Leon. Pleasure. It's nice to see you at our meetings.
All right. I'll entertain and make a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Home favorite, aye?
Aye.
Yep. You're finished. Thanks again.